Need a hold to order, roll call please.
Here.
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 Here. And we have a quorum. First item of discussion this morning is the Airport Automated Weather Observation System, Relocation and Replacement Improvement Project. We'll call on Brian, you're our city engineer. Good morning, Brian.
Thank you. Good morning, your honor and members. The Automated Weather Observation System at the Fergus Falls Airport is substantially completed. Our portion was generally the foundation, underground work and all the feed systems to this project. The state in turn was supplying the equipment and doing the installation. Currently right now, MINDOT is coordinating the equipment installation. We're hopeful this system will be operational this fall. Speaking of coordination, the coordination between MINDOT, the FAA and SEH has been very enduring for them, such that they substantially exhausted their budget. Because of this, SEH approached the state and then the state has approved to amend and increase their construction administration professional services agreement with the city. They have approved an amount of $28,000. So part of the request is to accept SEH's construction administration amendment in the amount of 28,000. Now, we've talked about budget. Originally, this project was funded 70%, 30%. 70% MINDOT, 30% local. With recent funding allocation, MINDOT now is proposing to fund this project at 100%. That includes SEH's construction amendment. The total project cost at this time is about $195,700, which is now funded 100% by the state, which is generally about $58,000 local dollars staying in our 456 fund. The state is also referring this grant agreement, so therefore I'm also requesting authorization to execute the state agreement for 9350 once it becomes available. So I'll open up any questions you may have.
Thanks, Brian. Anyone have any questions for Brian?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thanks, Laura. There's a motion to bring this to the council for further consideration on Monday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, continuing on with our city engineers, City Project 5961, the 2024 Street and Utility Improvement Project for Junius Avenue.
Yes, thank you, honor. Yeah, we've been evaluating future projects for next year's construction season. At this time, I'm proposing one of those projects being the street and utility reconstruction of Junius Avenue from Cascade Street to Union Avenue. If you turn your projector right there, there's approximate project limits for this project. Similar to past reconstruction projects, a portion of the reconstruction is proposed to be specially assessed through the 420 proceedings. We will be funding all the utilities and everything, but like I mentioned, a portion will be with the street. Therefore, we're going to have to proceed with a preliminary engineering report. So I solicited services of interstate engineering for the PER report and preliminary design. They've submitted a proposal in the amount of $20,000 for this. So at this time, I'm requesting to initiate public improvement 5363, 7219, and 8235, and then combine all these 5363, 7219, and 8235 into CP 5961. I'm also requesting the order of the preliminary engineering report for CP 5961, and to also accept Interstate Engineering's professional service proposal in the amount of $20,000. I'll open up to any questions you may have.
Thanks, Brian. Any questions for?
I'll second.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Brent. Just one quick point clarification. So I spoke to one of the residents that lives along this stretch and just to reassure, like anytime we do a street like this, when we look at the underlying utilities, right? So that's the only thing that they brought up to me is just that they've had some issues with the sewer line going out to the street. But we always do that when we look at a reconstruction of a street like this.
Of course.
Thank you. Scott?
And maybe it was not clear to me, but is this the full-blown under utilities with water sewer, everything curb and gutter, the full-blown everything? Is it we're not just doing the surface of the street?
No, street and utilities. Some areas in past reconstructions, we try to salvage the curb and gutter as best as possible to lower the price and everything. This particular, I would envision do some existing lifts that we are going to be removing some curb lines and perhaps widening as well, but that's to be determined during design.
The stretch certainly needs it, so that'd be good.
It certainly does. All right, thanks. We have a motion to bring this to the council on Monday. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. One more for you, Brian. That's 2022 Minnesota State Active Transportation Infrastructure Program.
Yes, thank you. As we noted just recently in the past, we received a total amount of $391,960 for basically a combination of five projects from the Minnesota State Active Transportation Program. During past discussion, MINDOT, or excuse me, the city council requested I contact MINDOT and see if we could do more of an olive cards referring to primarily option number three, which is a stairway improvement and sidewalk near Kenny School. MINDOT has responded indicating the city could accept funding for only option three if that's our desire. So if acceptable, I'll respond to the program administrator and request the AT grant agreement be drafted. Just going over the local share, our previous local share was about $71,250. If only option three is chosen, the local match is estimated at $26,466. Since then, we have been evaluating some options. I believe that the school district has agreed to cover 50% of our local share, and we determined the other 50% of our local share could come out of our sidewalk program. So we have identified funding for option three if that's how we proceed with this manner. So at this time, I'm just requesting authorization, requesting MINDOT to prepare the final AT agreement for option number three, and I'll open up any questions you may have.
Question, Brian, do we know if the school's interested in funding any beyond option three? Like if they know that there's just money on the table?
We did let them know the total amount, and this was their preferred, right, Andrew?
Correct. Yeah, that, yeah. I mean, they definitely seemed hesitant to accept the whole project. They thought this was the priority. We as a city felt the same way, and they committed to half of this amount. I don't know that there's the ability to do more than that.
We have a motion to bring this recommendation to the city council on Monday?
I'll offer it, your honor.
Thanks, Scott. I'll second. Thanks, Jim. Scott?
I'm still thinking that we should do all four of these pieces and not just option three. And what would be the process if we wanted to do that? Because what's currently on the table is just option three, right? That's what, or are we just looking at?
I guess it's preparing the, executing the grant agreement for option number three is the recommendation of staff at this time. So to your point, if you want to see what options are available, I mean, what?
I would rather see us do the full project of four options that were initially suggested. You know, a couple of the other pieces are relatively small. You know, this one, I think, is one of the two most expensive pieces of the puzzle. And then the other longer sidewalk over by Cleveland School would probably be the second more expensive piece of the puzzle that runs along Cleveland. Those two, I guess, I would agree are priorities, and the other two are maybe smaller pieces. But we're not going to get a better deal than this, I guess, is the point. You know, to have this amount of funding provided where we can get something at, you know, 20% of the cost, it's a terrific way for the city to gain a $400,000 asset for, you know, $80,000. I think it would be better if we just did all four pieces of the project rather than just option three. And I'm grateful that the school district is willing to be part of it for what they are, and that's great. And I think that we should still go forward with the rest of it.
Your honor.
Just going back to the budget committee, when we looked at this, we don't know where that money was going to come from, do we do bill? We were having a little issues of.
So for the $14,000 that Brian mentioned, our current match, we had leftover money from our sidewalk program in 2022 that we didn't use.
Right.
So that's sitting in our capital fund, so we're going to use that because sidewalks for sidewalks makes good sense. You know, another funding source that we were looking at was our Trails and Paths budget, which we only have about $35,000 in that fund to maintain our trails right now. We're budgeting, I think, $10,000 a year. But Guy, you have a resurfacing project for going up Pebble Lake Road, right?
Seal coat.
Seal coat, yes, not resurfacing.
No one overlay?
Which was going to take.
$12,000.
$12,000 of that probably. So we don't have a lot in for trails and paths and sidewalks. That's why we narrowed in on option three.
Maybe another follow-up then would be down the line, if we wanted to do these other three pieces of the puzzle, what are the chances that we can get this kind of funding for it? You know, or was this like a once-in-a-lifetime deal, or have we got a better, would we have a shot at this down the line?
Yeah, answer your question. Yeah, these are, these type of funds and everything, they're not once-in-a-lifetime. They come up in safe routes of school or different like systems, this program, ET, they're kind of on an annual basis too for application or biannual funding. So we have the ability to reapply as well.
Yeah, I'll just say I agree with Scott. I think that any investment we make in this kind of safety is, I mean, absolutely worth it. And I think that, you know, we should try to figure out a way to fund some more of these projects when, when the grant opportunity comes up again, because if it saves one life, then it's absolutely worth it.
Yeah, thanks. Maybe I'd recommend, so we have a motion to bring option number three to the council on Monday night. Maybe we could just ask the group, the bike and ped committee that worked on this active transportation grant to be present on Monday night and just go over all of the projects and what was the rationale behind each of the projects, and we can just have that discussion there on Monday night and make a final decision on which grant.
And I would like, I would like to see that, because when they came to us with this project, the only reason we got it because they said it was 100% funded. Am I not mistaken on that one? I think it was, they were, it was, it was a grant that was going to do this project that wasn't going to cost the city anything.
That was the initial understanding.
And so now, now something changed, so I'd be, and I'd like to talk about that, so.
Yeah, and I'm interested in just, again, just revisiting the rationale. If it's safety and if it's around these schools and, you know, get some input from the school of, are these projects something that's going to enhance safety to the schools? I think then it's something obviously that we should consider. So with that, we have a motion to bring option number three. Understand that we'll have full discussion on the other options as well to Monday night's council meeting. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Moving right along, Clara Beck, our community development manager, will talk to us about a conditional use permit for 1603 Pebble Lake Road.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, everybody. This is kind of a repeat of a conversation that we had on Monday, but we as staff do need a little bit more clarity on the direction that council would like to go with this conditional use permit. There are still a few options that are in front of you, which are to either approve, approve with conditions, or deny with stated reasons for denial, or extend the 60-day period on this conditional use permit. So when we had talked on Monday, the motion had failed, but there were no reasons for denial given, so we need to have, have more of a conversation about the direction council would like to go with this one. I did attach our code language in the packet on conditional use permits that gives a little bit more background into what the planning commission is looking at when they're looking at conditional use permits. It's very much based on our zoning code, and we do know that there are some changes that we probably do need to make to our zoning code as, you know, THC sales move forward in the city of Fergus Falls. So what we're working with right now is the ordinance language that was passed probably almost a year ago now. So we're always finding places where we maybe need to pick up some pieces or make better connections, and we're working on that. But the rules that we have in front of us right now are what's available to you in your packet and in our city code. So happy to have discussion and figure out where we're going to go with this one.
Thanks, thanks Clara. And I can take responsibility for the fact that we, when that resolution was denied on Tuesday night, I should have known that it needed to be denied with conditions for it to be binding. So anyway, here's same resolution, our same recommendation from staff to the council to recommend, to approve this conditional use permit. We'll bring it back to the council on Monday night, and if it is defeated, it will be defeated with reasons stated, so it's actually binding. Fair enough? Questions for Clara, or someone like to make a motion to take this up on Monday night? Tom?
I'll make the motion, and then after, you know, after speaking with some, some folks, I understand that, that part of the reason this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the reason this came up was that, you know, one of the business owners in town had some concerns that this business was, you know, going to be able to sell this stuff without as much of the conditions imposed on the existing businesses. Is that?
I have not heard that.
Oh, okay.
That's not been brought forward to me.
Okay, okay. And so, yeah, so I guess if that's not the case, then, yeah, I mean, I make a motion to bring it to council, and I still, you know, am in favor of approving the conditional use permit. Yeah.
And, okay, so there's a motion, there's a second to bring this to the council?
I will second, and I wasn't here Monday night, but to me, I would like to see if they are able to sell, I would like to have a room by itself with a 21-year-old person in that room selling it, not any 16-year-old high school student out there able to sell.
Thanks, Jim. I think it's an important point on Monday night we need to clarify. I was a little bit uncertain as to existing, like state law, existing ordinance in Fergus Falls as far as age to sell, and then any recommendations from enforcement, and then also how that, so we can consider, like how that relates to alcohol sales as well, just so everyone's clear on all of those conditions that we're putting on any.
Yeah, we could, we can address at least the THC part of that this morning. So our, our other ordinance that's in place for the actual licensing of THC businesses, which is a separate process from the conditional use permit, that language does state that sales need to be handled by somebody who is 21-plus and that the establishment be 21-plus. So that is something that the applicant will have to, if they're going to be able to sell and use their license, they will have to adhere to that ordinance language.
So it's 21 across the board for THC sales in the city of Fergus Falls?
So you could add, your honor, if I may, you could add conditions to this stating what Jim just said, that, you know, we'll approve this with the condition that they have a space that's only available to people over the age of 21, and only people over the age of 21 are selling it. The other option you have is to change the ordinance that the city has related to THC and say, we don't want that to be 21. If that's the case, I don't know if that's the case. But if we need to do changes to the ordinance to get the council comfortable, then we would suggest that we extend the 60 days to 120 days to give us enough time to study that issue and make whatever changes are necessary. But keep in mind, if you don't, and I'm a little bit concerned about Monday night, simply because I know there's at least one council member that's going to be gone, and I know this is going to be like a 4-3 issue potentially, and if we don't get five votes one way or the other, it automatically becomes approved on that 60-day or 120-day if you were to extend it. So just want to keep that in the back of your minds as well as we talk about next steps.
Well, we can make sure, and we have the discussion on Monday night too, that we take that into consideration, that we need five votes in favor of something or in, you know, so we can just make sure that we have a binding resolution for or against, but we can take that into consideration as we craft whatever it is we're going to vote on, rather than just simply.
Yeah, and the condition language I would maybe consider adding would be simply that they adhere to all other ordinances of the city of Fergus Falls, because then that encompasses anything that would be in either our THC ordinance or anything else elsewhere. So rather than just restricting it to that 21-plus, you're encompassing the entire ordinance.
Yeah, Laura, please.
So I would like to know what the chief of police, what his recommendations are.
Thanks, make sure to ask.
I mean, we can tell you pretty certain that he believes that individuals should be 21 to sell. He believes that individuals that are under 21 should not be in an establishment that sells these products, and he feels pretty strongly about that. We had a nice lively discussion yesterday talking the ins and outs of all of the THC, and I would be confident saying that's how he would, he would feel, is that we don't change that from 21.
In the state of Minnesota, for tobacco sales, it has to be 21, correct?
I don't know.
18.
Yes, it's 18 for alcohol and 21 for tobacco.
To sell?
21 to sell tobacco.
To purchase.
But I think they have people working at Casey's and other places that, I don't want to get anybody in trouble, but you have to be 21 to sell alcohol.
No.
I mean, I mean tobacco, sorry.
Tobacco.
But only 18 for alcohol. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we'll make sure to, we'll make sure to have those.
But I guess what I'm getting at is that I don't, I mean, I think if, if someone's old enough to sell alcohol, they're old enough to sell these, you know, lower potency hemp products. I mean, because it's basically like the 3-2 beer of hemp, you know? So that's just my two cents on it.
Thanks, Tom. Scott?
Just a part of the process, as Andrew mentioned, the possibility to extend this is out there, but as I read the details on this, I don't know that we can just unilaterally extend it, or can we? Do we have to have the agreement of the business owner that apply?
You can, you can unilaterally extend it one time, and then beyond that, you would need to get the approval from the applicant. And you can extend it based on the fact that you're doing further study on the issue.
And I'm not necessarily looking to extend it, I'm just not very settled with the advantage of extending it. If we can settle this on Monday, great. And I think as Jim suggested, putting a condition on that restricts the sales to the current licensing limits of, you know, 21 to access, 21 to sell, then I think that answers our questions, and we can move forward with it.
We'll make sure we lock ourselves in a room until we get five votes to something, okay? All right, any other questions for Clara?
And no body breaks.
No body breaks.
The only other thing I would say, your honor, is we are going to be looking at the zoning and the THC code in some form or fashion, and just a couple of things that come to mind. The new law allows us to restrict sales within a certain diameter of a school or childcare center, and I believe that will probably bring that language in front of you at some point in the future, because, you know, that's, there's some merit, I think, to that conversation about not having these sales within a certain distance of a school. So there are some things that we're looking at in the zoning code that we'll be bringing forward, and one of them also is this topic of B2. You know, is, do we want to allow this in B2 zones by conditional use and continue to have these challenging case-by-case conversations? There's another application that may be forthcoming in a B2 zone that I don't think will be any easier because of some of the circumstances of that particular property. And so looking at, you know, is it even something we want to continue to entertain in a B2 zone, or do we have enough areas where we already allow THC sales in a B3, B4, B5, B6, I1, I2, you know, the list goes on and on. So just wanted you to be aware of that. We are having discussions as staff about the zoning, which will go, of course, through the planning commission process and then to the council. So you may see something in the coming weeks or months that may feel like it's a little bit out of left field, but it all kind of ties into the different scenarios that we're seeing. And as Clara mentioned at the beginning, we had no clue, you know, when we started this, what this would entail, and we've, I think we've seen a lot of different things we weren't anticipating at this point in time, so.
And the planning commission does have a subcommittee that's already started meeting about some of these issues, and since it's a subcommittee, they have a little bit more flexibility on timing, so you don't have to wait for all of those planning commission, like the calendar meetings, for them to be able to come up with some recommendations.
Thanks, Clara. Thanks, Andrew. Yeah, there's definitely lots of things to consider, lots of changes, and that's what we're doing here. So we'll bring this up, there's a motion to bring this up for consideration and discussion Monday evening. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Item number five is the TIF development agreement for FM Bank, and again, we'll call on Clara Beck.
Yes, going back in time a little bit, back in April, you approved a TIF district to surround the former ShopCo site. This is the development agreement that goes along with that TIF district that lays out payment timeline, the actual construction timeline of that project. It's been back and forth between the, the developers and our legal counsel, and we feel it's in a good place at this point to come before you. So if you have any questions or want to talk about it at all, this would be a great time for that.
Thanks, Clara. Question, Scott?
When we put together the TIF agreement in April, the limits of that were bigger than what this development agreement actually covers, correct? Because that included, that included the city parking lot, and it was a little bit bigger space.
Yep.
So what happens with this is you, just specific to the bank's work on that ShopCo building, right?
Yeah, this is specific to the bank's removal of the ShopCo building, and then the payments that will be made from the increment based on the removal of that building.
And so we could see another development agreement or a TIF agreement similar to this for some other portion of this at some time in the future, as long as that district exists, right?
You could.
I don't know of one, but it's just the options there. Okay, thank you.
All right, Scott.
I just, Laura?
I just want to say that, I mean, how I feel about this hasn't changed since April with this TIF district, so I'm just not in favor of it.
Thanks, Laura. So let's get a motion to bring this to the.
I'll offer that.
Thank you. Scott, second. Jim, okay, any other comments? So this is, the motion is to bring this to the council for consideration on Monday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
No.
That motion carries, we'll bring this up on Monday night. Thanks, Clara. The rest of this morning will be turned over to Finance Director Bill Somer for fee schedule and the budget and levy, preliminary budget and levy presentation. So good morning, Bill.
Good morning. Thank you, your honor and council. We'll go through the fee schedule here first, and then we'll move on to the budget. So you all have a copy in front of you, and we'll just walk through kind of page by page and explain. There are several changes in the fee schedule this year. So starting on page one, under nuisances, moving that from $100 to $200 for the first notice, and then it stays the same as plus $100 for each one. We are doubling.
We don't have the schedule. Which one we're at? It's in our packet, packet? Okay.
Is it there? Online. Online, okay.
I'm sorry. You were holding that up, I thought we had a piece of paper, and I'm going, I don't have it here.
Do you want to use mine to follow?
No, that's fine.
Long?
No.
Do the rest you have.
I see it in the other packet.
Okay. Sounds good. So with nuisances, we are doubling that fee, but our goal is that, so city crews are not out mowing people's lawns because they're not mowing it themselves or taking care of the weed issues, so that's why we're moving that up. We don't want to be in that business. On the bottom of page one, for hemp-derived THC product sales, we just talked about that here in the previous item, going from $500 to $2,500. We discussing that with our police chief, lots of work on that. So making that similar to the liquor licensing is why we chose 2,500 for that, and that's based on the police chief's recommendation as well. So looking at page two, we have a fireworks license and a loading zone license, moving from $75 on the fireworks to 100, loading zone 125 down to 100. We're just making those consistent. If you see in that area, all those others are at $100, so we're making that consistent. It's about the same amount of work we do on the city side. Then we're implementing a new fee for the peddler, solicitor, transient merchant, $100 up to the first, up to 14 days, and then 250 annually. We have to do a background check with each one of those, so makes sense to have that fee in as well. We're doing a lot of work with that and background through the PD. Nothing on page three, page four. Looking at hydrant meters, kind of down towards the bottom of that page, from $50 to $150. Those three-inch meters are very expensive meters. I think it's 1,200 to 1,500 a meter, so moving that fee up in relation to the cost basis of those. Nothing on page five. Or six. Look at page seven, shoreline alteration, moving from $20 to $50, making that consistent with the one above it of land alteration that's already at 50. We actually do a little more work on the shoreline alteration than we do on the land alteration, so it makes sense to have those at least similar. Okay, page eight. We're removing the verbiage minimum one-hour charge, so we'll charge based on the, the time we are spent on a motor vehicle crash. This is through the fire department, so we'll just bill for actual hours, right? Yep. And then adding the utility terrain vehicle there to our list of equipment, and when there's a planned event. And when there's a planned event, our fire department is asked to be on standby quite often. So implementing a fee there of $50 per hour for our fire department. Nothing on page nine. Page 10, out at the landfill, I'm moving, moving our handling fee from $50 up to $100, or if it's a non-resident, from 75 to 150. That's dealing with dirty loads, things like that. Again, we don't want to have to be doing that. We want things to come in the way they're instructed to bring them in, so that our staff is not spending time fixing that up out there. So kind of discouragement fee there on that. But certainly, we spend a lot of time when we do do that. Page 11, park and rec. We're doing a number of increases here. You can see under the fields, the American Legion field, going from 55 up to 60. We're basically going up, you know, the $5 there, baseballs, fields up 5 to 40. $60 there. Let's see. Per practice, per game, there we go, $40 for the practice, for the game, 60. Again, our staff is doing lining, preparing the fields and whatnot. But note, these exclude the youth baseball programs, because you, as a city council, have already made that determination that we're not charging those fees for the youth programs. Softball fields, same thing, going up there, the $5, again, still excludes the youth programming. And then the summer rec programs, going up $5 each there as well. We have needed to increase our wages for our summer help significantly just to get help. So we need to pass some of that on here. We've increased our wages over there, I think, over the last two, three years, so a couple times in there. Turning over to page 12. Implementing for the sound system that we have over at the pavilion, and this is a, this is the one with our mobile stage, right, Guy?
Yes.
So we already have a, a fee in for $300 if you want to rent the entire sound system. But if you only need the speakers, which we've had some requests for that, we're looking at a $100 for that. So adding a fee there, that's not in addition to the 300, it's only if you want just the speakers. And then under the shelters, the Pebble Lake Shelter, going from 150 to 175. Picnic tables going from 15 to $35. Yes, that's kind of a, a large increase on that. But we need two staff members to deliver each table. To me, that's still a good deal, considering they're getting delivered. It's a lot of work and a lot of staff. And then the Riverfront Pavilion, moving from 100 to 150. We've had great, you know, use of that facility. $100 is very inexpensive, we thought wise to bring that up a little bit. We want to make sure as we move forward in the park budget that we are budgeting, and we'll see that when we get into our budget presentation. But putting money aside, you know, for replacements and repairs as we go forward through the years. Youth sponsorships going up as well, 285 to 300 for the same reasons we talked about. And then the community arena, we've been working on that. As you know, we're moving to year-round ice. And we've been meeting with our user groups, kind of adjusting our rates for our winter season with them, which I'll bring that back to you as an exhibit A like we usually do to our visitor agreements. But then also changing our rates, which we have not changed, I think, since our inception of that facility back in 2012. So during that winter season, so if we have time we're renting other than our standard three-user groups, $195 per hour with ice. If our user groups go over on their usage, then we're going to charge 175. We've talked with our user groups on that, so they are aware of that. And then if we're renting it without ice, $250 per, per rank with no ice. Leagues and curling, we will be at 175 for them. What that relates to is the lowest rate of our user groups that are using it at 175. It's kind of keeping some consistency there. And then the April through September, so the off-season, looking at the rate being 195. Currently in the schedule, we're at 175 for user groups, 195 for non-user groups. I'm looking at that being just 195 across the board. And that's because now we're taking the costs and completely allocating them out to those summer months. Whereas before, the Zambonis were all charged out in the six-month winter season. Now we're, we're doing a full cost allocation out, out there. So that's why, just making that 195, and then the 250 again, if there's no ice being used. So that's a summary of our arena rates. Looking over at page 13, adding road closure signs there. This is when we have special events and whatnot. And then our labor rates for that, moving up from 35 to 40 Saturdays, up to 54, and leaving Sundays at 70. Looked at our wage schedules, where we brought that up over the last couple of years, and need to bump this up to cover our costs. Looking over at page 14, the leachate and septicage. This is when an organization comes out to dispose of septicage out at our sewer plant. Looking at $50 per thousand gallons for that load, for leachate, or $50 per load for septicage. And again, costs going up, and then looking at also what is being charged in the area. Page 15, our signed permits, moving those fees up there from $25 to 50 on the 100 square foot. 101 plus, going 50 plus the 40 cents per square foot. And billboards then moving from 100 to 150. So our planning department spends time on these. For example, on a billboard, can be as much as a couple hours on that. And then our building inspector also goes out on-site and spends probably another hour on that. So when I kind of looked at their cost basis of what they're actually putting into this, basing those charges on that, so. And I guess that was the last one on the page. So any questions on that? Otherwise, we look for this to go to council on Monday. Scott?
I just had a number of comments that I'd like to go through. We'll go back to page one.
Okay.
Under the liquor THC, temporary on-sale, 3.2, $25 per day. That would apply to what kind of a scenario? Where, where do we have that kind of a situation?
Lynn knows I'm going to look at her at this moment, because she handles our liquor licensing.
Temporary per day? That's, one of the breweries wants to come down and take part in a special event, or they're going to ask to, to do something for benefit, that type of thing. And that's a $25 fee, and then it's just our time just to process it and get it to the state. And the state gets the ultimate approval.
Because they already have a standard liquor license, right?
It's just they can take it out, take the license out to go on site.
And so that's different than, like, a food truck permit that's good for the year? I mean, even though these operations would have a license to operate on a yearly basis, they still need a specific event?
They can do it for one to four days, up to state law, up to 12 days per year.
And then is that $25 a day a reasonable amount? It seems like that's pretty cheap to me. I could, I could see that being dramatically higher by comparison to some of the other fees that we've got for special events and things.
It's a bit in line with other cities that are charging that. It's, it's a very simple form, just to process and then send it off to the state. And then once the state approves it, they send out an email to the business letting them know that's approved. So it's really not a lot of time involved on that.
Okay. Second page. You had, you're adding the peddler transient merchant license. You mentioned that there's a background check required for that. And I suppose that, to some degree, justifies the cost. But this seems like a very high cost for what is, in effect, a pretty small business. And by comparison, it, it just seems very expensive.
So Lynn, is it?
This one is very labor-intensive. This one gets a lot of police calls. When peddlers come to town and start knocking on people's doors, it's a lot of cold calls. The police are out often, and it is the full background check that's done on each person. So there is a significant cost of the city staff trying to do that.
And it's mostly the police department, right?
Is, is there clarification on that? Like, when fundraisers and kids are going around there, obviously.
That's exempt.
It, it's clearly exempt, and people will know that so that we don't.
Yep, we don't charge for lemonade stands that people pay. These are the people that are trying, you know, going door to door, selling cleaning products.
Certainly.
And cleaners and educational works. But they, they do generate a lot of calls to the police department when people start knocking on people's doors.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Lynn.
It, it, it still seems kind of expensive to me. At the bottom of the page, plan review for changes, additions, or revisions at $30 an hour. Since you've got $65 an hour for everything else there, I think that could be $65 an hour for that as well. The time is the time. I think it would be, it would make sense to keep that hourly rate the same.
I'm fine with that.
So I would suggest that one.
Do the rest of you, council, want to put that in? I'm writing that in.
Okay.
Which one was that?
Bottom of page two.
Page.
Additional plan review.
So Lynn, you have that?
Last item, bottom of page two. All right, let me jump a little further up. Page seven, under land alterations. Just a question. The line reads change-out and alterations. I don't know what that applies to.
I don't know either. I'd have to ask Jason or April on that one. Do any of the rest of you, Guy, do you know what?
I don't know what change-outs would be.
We will, um, look at that for Monday and bring that back.
Maybe that line gets removed, or maybe it has to be adjusted some, but I.
Sure.
Need to understand what that is for. Page eight, recreational burning. Permit is no charge. So if someone wants to do just a backyard fire ring and roast some marshmallows or whatever, they're supposed to get a permit for that? Is that, is this the case? And can you just get it, is it a per-use basis? Or do you do it once in May, and you're good to burn all you want all summer, or how does that work?
As, as a property owner, it's a lifetime permit. They go through the applications, it's really simple, they can do it online or stop in a fire station. And so long as they remain ownership of that property, it's, it's good for the lifetime. The homes that are, residents that are rentals, those are per-year basis. And there's the checks there that the property owner has to approve it as well, or give the okay, or we issue the permit to a tenant.
It took me like two minutes to complete mine, and I had it the next day.
I've got mine.
Yeah.
Okay. So if you're a homeowner, you need a lifetime permit to do recreational burning? And if you're a renter, it's an annual permit, you have to apply every year?
Yep.
Okay.
Meant to be very simple and streamlined, but an education.
All right. Helpful. Page 10, landfill fees. Lists tire rims at $3. It seems to me tire rims being metal, they would just go to the metal pile at no cost. But maybe there's a reason why they're separate. I don't know that.
It's removing the tire from the rim.
Okay. Oh, so that's not just the rim, it's the process of getting it removed. Well, then it seems like it ought to go into that cleanup load deal at $50 an hour or something. But I don't know, if $3 covers it, maybe that's fine, or maybe we end up keeping them out of the ditches. I'm, you know, I know there's different reasons for things, but.
It has shown to be covering. We just need to have that so that while we get a bunch of them and do them all at once. So it's, it's just a smooth operation that goes very well. And that, that's just a basic fee, so it's not free, because the rubber does have to get disposed of and the cost.
Yeah, that's a separate thing.
Make some money out of it.
So maybe if it just said tire rim removal or something so that it was clearer, I think that would be all right. Because if I just came in with a truckload of tire rims, it's just going to go to the metal pile, you're not going to charge me for each one. But if they got tires on them, then that's when the fee kicks in, correct?
So we must have a tire machine somewhere?
Same car tires.
Okay.
We'll make a note, removal. And just a side note with that whole section. We will be coming back later this fall to discuss utility funds and utility rates in general. So we didn't really touch these rates, but we may look at them this fall. We do a deeper dive into that before our December budget hearing, so.
Okay.
So I won't say, things won't change there, but I haven't looked at it yet.
Tell us something. Page 11, under park and rec, just a question. Campground fees, the, those fees are all going to be changing once DeLagoon is redone, right?
Correct. And so the campground will be planned to be closed next year for construction. So we don't even have revenues in the 2024 budget. But yes, then we will have to look at those fees for '25 and see what does that look like, so.
Very good. Page 12, just as a comment, under picnic shelters and tables for the Riverfront Pavilion, it just reminded me of it, so I thought I'd mention it. I think that we could look at adding some more trashcans. When I've been downtown for various events, that seems to be the one thing I noticed, that, that people are, they don't have enough places to throw stuff away.
Guys got that?
That's it.
All right.
Thanks, Scott. Any other questions for Bill?
And I'm glad my fellow employees were here, because I would not have been able to answer all that.
Should have given you a heads up, sorry.
No, that's great.
Teamwork, thanks for your work. Comments and suggestions. Scott, would someone like to make a motion that we bring this to the council on Monday night with those changes? Thanks, Brent. Thanks, Scott, Rachels. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Next item is the 2024 budget and levy. And again, we'll call on our Finance Director, Bill Sonmore.
Thank you, Your Honor. And like I think I've said for many years now, I can't believe here we are again, bringing the budget before you. It seems like we just did this. It goes rather quickly through the year. We're going to go through a PowerPoint here this morning, and kind of like we normally do. But first with the timeline. As the budget doesn't just start yesterday, we actually started back in May. So our tax levy committee this year is the mayor, Councilmember Job, Councilmember Rachels, and Administrator Andrew Bremseff. Sandy and I then also join in the committee to work with you on that. But want to thank the committee, lots of hard work this year. We met a lot more than we have in prior years. We met every, I think it was every Wednesday, basically since May 17. So for at least two hours at a time. So just so the rest of you, council, know, your tax levy committee put in hours and hours and hours of work on this. And excellent, excellent job. So thank you very much. And interject as we go through, as you have thoughts, and if I'm not covering it, because I will miss some things that I was going to say. So feel free to interrupt me and interject. But so, May 17, we started the process. Here we are today, giving you this presentation. We'll bring this back. Then on Monday, we need the city council to approve the proposed budget and the proposed levy. Keeping in mind, what we come in, in September now, we can bring that down. The tax levy committee wants to bring that down, and then come back in December then. So the tax levy committee is going to continue to work between September and December to bring that down and bring the final budget to you on December 4. We'll have a public meeting at that time after 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM or later on December 4, where the public's allowed to speak and make comments at that meeting. And then we would ask for approval in December, as we need to get that to Otter Tail County then by December 28 to have the final levy to Otter Tail County. All right, so where are our cost drivers here in the city? So we looked at what's going up in our costs. So wages, we have a settled contract. So for 2024, we know that 2.8% is, is in the budget for that. Health insurance, excellent news on that. We had zero change in our health rate. So we were, you know, planning for 10% all along. And then our HR Director, Mike Hartwell, brought us the good news that no changes for '24. So thanks to Lakes Country Service Co-op as well, where we purchase our health insurance through, good job leveling out those costs for their, for their members. Electric, we put in 2%, city utilities 4%, natural gas 2%. Now, natural gas, keep in mind, we doubled that in the prior year and added 10%. So we're just tweaking it up a bit, looking at what we've actually been spending and talking with both electric and natural gas companies. Liability insurance at 7%, property at 4%, auto at 8%. Those, we all get that from the League of Minnesota Cities for estimates. And the internal service fund, our equipment fund, where we own all the equipment, rent that to other departments of the city, looking at a 10% increase there. Highest we, we've done in many, many years. But the inflationary cost to our equipment has just gone up so much. I mean, Gar. Highest we've, we've done in many, many years, but the inflationary cost to our equipment has just gone up so much, I mean garbage trucks, guy, twenty, thirty percent up, I know our police vehicles, same thing, we're just seeing that across the board, so we put in ten percent there, workers comp, ten percent as well, we put in an estimate, and that's again, I'm talking with the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. So the total budget for the city of Fergus Falls, we're proposing revenues of seventy-four million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand four eighty-four. Proposed expenditures, seventy-one million, one twenty-one, two eighteen. A proposed tax levy of eight point three million, that's a change from um, twenty twenty-three of six hundred and sixty-eight thousand four fifty, or eight point seven six percent. So that's the change in the dollars, again, city of Fergus Falls, levies, you know, says, here's the amount of money we need to collect, Ottertail County, you go spread that over the tax base and collect that, but you set that flat dollar amount, so the flat dollar amount change, eight point seven six percent. The tax capacity rate um, going to fifty-five point six seven nine, or three point four eight percent. So in other words, if you have new growth in the city, so new construction, that helps spread it, spread it over the pie, um, more pieces of the pie in essence. And of course, also, if um, current market values are going up of existing properties, that changes that tax rate. So that not going up as much then, because of that growth in value. Okay, here is it by fund type, um, general fund, you can see a fifteen point five million, special revenue funds, that includes our public library, port authority, Bigwood Center, um, all our tax increment districts, tax abatements. Debt service funds, that's where we pay our bonds, so um, um, maintaining those, funds coming in and going out. Capital projects, that's where we build projects, at thirty-three million, and we'll talk about that in detail in another slide. Enterprise funds, that's your liquor stores, water, sewer, storm. And internal services, that equipment fund where we're doing that ten percent increase. I want to talk briefly about the capital project funds. Thirty-three million dollars, that is a high number, it's much higher than um, twenty twenty-three budget, so we're seeing a budget, you know, going from fifty-some million to seventy-one million on expenses, we'll talk about it in detail, but I want to get that point out now. We're doing an aquatic center next year for ten point eight million, we're doing DeLagoon Park improvements for five point two million, those two projects are funded by the sales tax. We're also the recipient of four million dollars from the state of Minnesota to do improvements down on the dairy. So you start adding up just those three projects, makes that capital projects much larger, makes the overall budget look much larger, but they are funding sources other than property taxes, so wanted to get that out at the outset. So that kind of speaks to that, in this showing the different pieces of the pie, look at where twenty twenty-three, where we are, and twenty twenty-four, the big difference there being the bonds, you can see the light blue, um, very small in twenty twenty-three, to thirty-two percent of our budget is issuing bonds, well, that's issuing those sales tax bonds. And also, um, we'll come back to you more this fall with a street project analysis, but this budget has eleven million dollars worth of street portions in there. Again, I want to bring that back, see how we're going to pay for all that, but we put it in as bonds and as capital outlay, so we'll see that on the next slide as well. Look at how capital outlay changed from twenty-eight, is it twenty-six or twenty-eight? Um, to forty-five percent, again, there's those capital projects that I mentioned, as well as large street projects of, of eleven million dollars.
Hey Bill, I want to just, I want to interject. The first half hour of the first meeting, budget meeting we had, we talked about streets is all we talked about. And uh, at every meeting since then was streets, so that's kind of where this is coming from, and we're going to get into more of it as we get to the, and Laura, I'm sure can interject this, but a lot, the, the meetings were, I think we had longer meetings because of the streets, and trying to figure out how to do this, and it's still not easy, and we're still trying to work on it, and as you'll see later on in the presentation, what's going to happen, so. Just want to put that out there, because that was a big thing.
Yep, excellent point, that's, big cost driver in here is your tax levy committee is hearing the public how we want to work on streets, so us as staff, we heard that from you loud and clear. So this is just that summary again, um, of the proposed levy, we want to make sure we're very clear about that, um, we would be asking you to approve that on um, Monday night, so we can get that up to Ottertail County by the end of the month, of eight point three million dollars, up from seven point six, or the eight point seven six increase. Okay, when we look at fixed costs, we looked at our cost drivers in a percentage basis. Here's what I'm looking at as fixed costs, so wages benefits, or yeah, wages benefits, the contracts of two point eight that we're in. We added an employee at the arena, um, because now we're running the chiller system, we have an election, actually three elections, um, two primaries and a general election, so we're adding staff in for that, that's all fixed costs at four hundred and thirteen thousand. And then two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar increase relating to um, wage adjustments, um, so we did a comp study, it's already been over a year ago now, maybe, is it already two? We were going to phase that in over about three years, to make sure we're competitive in the market, we've also needed to make wage adjustments for retention of employees and also recruitment of employees, um, as you know, throughout um, the area, people are having trouble finding employees, the city is no different in that, we've needed to maintain, um, to be competitive. Debt service, two hundred and forty-four thousand, that's new projects going on, so we have across the river here, um, phase two bonds, that's a new debt service levy going on. And then the dairy project, we have two deed demo loans, the port authority paid the first two years of payments on those, so now year three, we're actually starting to levy for that, that's in that number as well, so that and maybe some slight adjustments to existing bonds comes to that two forty-four. Equipment rental, there's that um, ten percent in the levy funds, one hundred and seventy-three, workers comp, the ten percent increase, utilities at ninety thousand. It's a little higher there, um, than just, you know, what we were seeing in the two and four percent on the cost driver page. Here, because of having summer ice, year-round ice, um, our utilities are higher, again, that gets passed on, of course, to the user groups in um, charges for services, but the expense side, that's going up here. Tax abatements going up, you remember we have that um, housing abatement fund, our other um, tax abatements, some coming on, again, those capture the new value that's constructed, that was, was never there before, you're capturing that for a few years. Also in here, we have thirty-two thousand for the purchase of the parking lot next to the Red River Mill, um, we're going to purchase that, probably interfund loan that, and we'll have to pay for that over five years, so we put thirty-two thousand in for the first year payment of that. R T C maintenance fund, this is the first time we've put this in. So you recall back in twenty-seven, we received one point one million dollars from the state of Minnesota, we are down, I looked at the balance yesterday, to about twenty-five hundred dollars remaining, so we're getting right down there to the end. Thus, next year, we need to levy some to um, take care of things up there.
Bill, can I just, when we talked about the R T C, we talked about moving the trees and the grounds to the parks, correct?
Yes, we did mention that, we'll have to talk about that, it's where you would charge your, your staff's time then. But this would be like taking care of things on the building, if we have, there's always something, we did this large project of boarding stuff up, but we'll always have stuff to contend with, but yeah, probably migrating a little more off to the, the parks again, like we did that whole front section, good point. Okay, that subtotals to one point three million, L G A for the year, um, state of Minnesota gave us a nice bump in L G A of five hundred and seventy-eight thousand. We're applying that here to these operations, we discussed long and hard, as a tax levy committee, how to use that. But really, you know, that's L G A to equalize taxes across the state, so we're applying that against these fixed costs we have. Comes down to a balance that we need to fund of seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, that would be a ten percent levy increase there. We're not going up ten percent, we're at eight point seven six, so that's why we wanted to point this out, that we're doing other things as well, to bring that down to um, eight point seven six. Part of that is, um, the city is receiving public safety aid of six hundred and fourteen thousand, that'll be used by the police and fire departments. A hundred and forty-five thousand of that is in the budget, one hundred thousand for um, um, stepping in basically some of these increases, and we'll talk about the other forty-five on another slide here. The tax process, of course, um, we go through each year, Ottertail County goes out, you know, assesses the property, what's it, what's it worth, comes up with the market value. You apply the state of Minnesota class rates against that to come up with what's called the um, tax capacity. You as the city council set the levy that you want to collect for twenty twenty-four, then you take the tax levy and divide it by the tax capacity to determine that rate, again. That was at, what were we at, three point four something percent rather than that eight point seven six. So just a little snapshot of how the process works. This is just the chart showing our levy and our rates, so you can see our levy has been um, increasing from twenty-one to twenty-four, the tax rate took a a big um, decrease in twenty-three, and that was because of large increases in market values, I'm sure you all saw that probably on your, on your own homes as well. And then that's coming back up some, but not as much um, on the tax rate side. And then just a projection of what taxes would be, we put in a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, so going from one thousand two sixty-six up to one thousand three ten for that home, and then a five hundred thousand dollar business going from forty-nine hundred to fifty-one hundred on that. So taxes and state aid, um, we talked, we've talked about our levy, comprised of, um, so that eight point three million dollars, the increase is comprised of the operating side of five point two seven percent, so if you didn't have new debt service or um, tax abatements um, or that new R T C fund, you would just have five point two seven, we'd be going up, and that covers our general fund, the port authority and library operations, so that the business we're doing, the general operations, three point two percent of our levy increase is for that new debt service, um, you know, for across the river, again, we only bonded for a portion of that, I want to remind people, you know, the Vadeen Trust giving a million dollars for phase two, as well as um, you know, our rotary clubs and we're on that um, fundraising campaign as well, so certainly, um, we bond for a portion of it, but receiving good support as well from the community. And then those other um, levies there for tax abatements, wanted to point out, the total tax abatement levy we're doing is one twenty-one five, again, capturing that new value. R T C, we talked about, local government aid, yeah, going up, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, and then that public safety aid we talked about briefly. Police department's looking at adding a school resource officer in our elementary schools, so budgeting over four years from this new public safety aid to put that in place, and then of course, after that, we need to step that into the budget. Here's a chart of L G A's, see, getting us back to those two thousand two levels, so we're very thankful for that. General government operations, pretty stable from twenty-three to twenty-four. We talked about how the city is experiencing inflation with our equipment and personnel, you name it, across the board, just like everyone is seeing in your personalized. Our um, employee contracts, we will start negotiations in twenty-four, so we don't know where twenty twenty-five will land yet. There's the elections we talked about, and we're adding a new employee in the building inspection department and stormwater, so sixty percent of that goes to the levy-based funds. Forty percent would go to the stormwater fund. Police department, um, a four point eight million dollar budget, certainly, you know, very large department for the city of Fergus Falls. Twenty-four officers, our office staff, there's, we're adding that new um, resource officer, fire department at um, four hundred, or nine hundred and forty-six thousand, you can see our stats there for um, volunteers, staff, and equipment. Both those departments do put money aside in capital outlay to maintain what they currently have, their current um, buildings and equipment, as well as the police department wants to look at adding a a building out at the gun range, so putting some money in here, I'm actually kind of reallocating from some other areas to start earmarking that for a building, so it might take a couple years of savings, but to get that done. Streets and highways, um, the tax levy committee is putting a ten percent increase into our street materials, overlays, and seal coats. What I've listed there is the total budget in those, that's not the ten percent increase, that ten percent increase is within those numbers, I wanted to show you what we're spending on, on our annual maintenance, so this is where you're just milling off the top, not doing utilities underneath and resurfacing those streets, um, like what you're seeing on Lincoln and Union right now. The city is constructing a new sand salt storage facility, um, we no longer could be in the state facility, so we had to build our own. We're purchasing that parking lot next to the Red River Mill, and then um, twenty twenty-four, we're going to, you know, see street and utility reconstruction projects, which we'll be bringing back to you more on that, what that relates to is then, like twenty twenty-five, we'll start to see property tax levies come in to support those bonds, so we'll bring that back to you this fall, but it doesn't, you know, you don't just start spending the money on streets today, you, you put this in process, bond for your improvements, and then the levies basically come one year later, so we're cognizant of that and looking at that for twenty twenty-five. Parks and rec, another big area for us, um, budgets of two point four million, we have twenty-nine parks on five hundred and fifty-one acres, so something to be proud of for Fergus Falls. Across the river here, we're going to see the opening of our new splash pad, I'm in the downtown phase two, we've talked about our aquatic center and our DeLagoon Park projects at ten point eight and five point two million, and the operating costs for the aquatic center then will come on in twenty twenty-five when we open that, so construction happening next year, operations the following year. There's just a little snapshot of those sales tax projects, it's a half percent sales tax, it's starting October first of this year, it will run through the end of twenty thirty-seven, it's the um, current legislation. And then we're expected, um, we're estimating about one point five five million collection, and we're basing that on our last full year of um, of collection. Again, that ended in twenty twenty-two, at the end of September, so, you know, we only collected nine months in twenty twenty-two. Economic development and community development, we're still funding greater Fergus Falls at fifty thousand dollars for twenty twenty-four. We have our various tax increment and tax abatement programs, we have our revolving loan programs. And then community development, of course, we have Clara's Department of Community Development, as well as um, Vis a Fergus Falls, our convention of visitors bureau that is funded through the local lodging tax, you see that coming in the general fund as a revenue, and then going out as um, an expense over to fund Visit Fergus Falls. The port authority, that levy going up from sixty thousand up to seventy-two thousand to fund um, operations of the port. Continue to collect money from the state of Minnesota to operate the C B H H facility that's owned by the port. Lakes Country Service Co-op continues to pay the port uh, monthly lease to support the debt service on the level four education facility that the port authority owns, the port also owns industrial park property, residential property, the old Norgren property, as well as the dairy property down by the river. So and again, um, we talked about how the port funded the levies, and now the city is levying for those bond, bond payments for the deed program. Public library, um, just over a million dollar budget, I'd like to show you that um, you know, it's mainly property tax supported here in Fergus, as well as regional library aid. You may look at some other cities where libraries aren't owned and operated by the counties, but here in Fergus Falls, it's, it's the Fergus Falls Public Library. And then here is um, Gail's stats from her last report she presented to you, I won't walk through them in detail, as she did that nicely already. But, great job over there, um, lots, lots of use. Bigwood Event Center, again, that event center is owned and operated by the city of Fergus Falls. Our technology project should be underway right now, we should get that finally completed in September, that's been a long process. We weren't, you know, through COVID, we weren't able to get our equipment, finally get that done, we want to do another a good, you know, kind of refresh and kickoff of marketing when we have that technology in. Um, we, we do need to fund that again, from another fund of the city for twenty twenty-four, um, so we're looking at transferring a hundred and twenty-four thousand into the operations from the liquor store for the Bigwood Center, now hopefully, we start to turn that around, I would love to see us at least break even in the near future, if possible, we knew going into this, you know, we were projecting three years of um, basically, you know, other funds paying towards that, general fund has done that the last couple of years, looking at this, so we'll have more discussions about this as well. So we'll have more discussions about this as we prepare the twenty-twenty-five budget. But spread the word, we're open for business and.
On that note, anecdotally, I was at a hockey tournament in Fargo this last weekend and talking from, talking to somebody from the metro. And they said that down in the metro, Thursday and Sunday weddings are becoming more common because they can't find venues for weddings. So hopefully that will work to our benefit somehow.
Nope, we absolutely want to capture that market, anything. So Brandon Curry, our liquor store manager is overseeing the Bigwood Center. So of course he's an entrepreneurial guy and so we're glad to have him working with Brooke out there. She's doing an awesome job for us. We just now need to get more business in here, so. And we're getting there, we're almost done, I know, I'm keeping you longer here. Capital improvements, we've talked about these a few times with street projects, ten-point-eight million dollars. So that's, if you remember, we, we talked about infrastructure a couple of meetings ago. Brian, you brought that big spreadsheet of, you know, projects we'd like to see done. You know, you're looking at Union Avenue South, Cleveland Avenue. You, you have Juniors, we just talked about at this meeting, various others. We hear you, we want to get streets done. So I put this in as a bond and the project, but we're going to come back in more detail as we, as we talk about that, how we're going to fund all of that. Aquatic Center, DeLagoon, we talked about dairy. We have a little bit of funds left on that RTC preservation project. So, and we found out from deed, those are not expiring, so we can still possibly use that. So we will look at that. Our annual sidewalk program, again, thirty-one million dollars, up significantly, but because of those projects. So we'll bring this back to you and with the franchise fee discussion, which should lead me to my next slide on franchise fees. When we talked about infrastructure with you a, a number of meetings ago now, you as a city council, you know, indicated your desire to look towards franchise fees. So the tax levy committee has been looking at that. We anticipate implementing a five percent franchise fee. It would be capped at one thousand dollars per month for large users. It wouldn't impact, you know, there's not a lot of users over that. I worked with our utility companies on that. Probably looking at an effective date of like March first of twenty-twenty-four. Utility companies would have the right to pass that franchise fee on, of course, to, to their customers and have it noted as a city fee, so people would know very clearly where that is going. They'd apply to all customers, whether they pay property taxes or not. So other governmental nonprofits, churches, you name it, not the city. We're not going to charge one fund to the city and send it over to the other one. The city wouldn't be taxed on that, much like sales tax. The franchise fees are estimated to collect about one-point-three million dollars a year that would help fund these, you know, the unfunded needs we have in streets. So that eleven million dollars worth of streets that we could look at doing, well, part of that, you know, maybe we start collecting and do one project with, with that. We're going to bring all that back to you on October second, having a work session at four-thirty to dive into this more, to discuss the implementation plan, how this is going to roll out and get that all before you, so.
And Bill?
Yep.
This is, these funds are restricted just for streets.
Thank you, yes.
Can't hit that hard, hard enough.
Yep, thank you, thank you for reminding me of that. Restricted for streets, for the pavement, so that's it. We would actually, I've set up a separate fund in the budget for this called Pavement Management. It's a capital project fund, so all those would go in, they would only be spent on streets. You're not going to use them for water lines, sewer, street lighting, you won't use them for that, only the streets, so. Good reminder. Okay, our last section, enterprise funds. I put kind of a caveat here, we're going to come back to you later this fall with an in-depth review of these like we normally do. It would have been too much to dump on you today. And our, our focus really is on that property tax levy right now and getting that to Ottertail County by the end of September. But our liquor store continues to do well and is profitable. We're looking at various projects there. Again, we're transferring out of this fund a hundred-and-twenty-four thousand in twenty-twenty-four for the Bigwood. But we're also continuing to do our annual transfers to the general fund of just five-hundred-thousand dollars to bring taxes down as well as supporting other costs of the city. And we can delve into that more if you had questions. But Brandon's doing a good job and it's profitable. Refuge Fund, we're maintaining operating income here as well. I've thrown in here a three percent increase to the refuse collection and disposal fees. We know our disposal fees will be going up on the expense side. And then we're going to be looking at our demolition cell out at the landfill. We have significant costs of opening a new cell and then the closing of the existing cell. So we're working with, it's Houston Engineering, right, Brian, on that? We'll bring that back to you, but it's more than what we've been thinking over the past years. You've heard that before when we've talked about the landfill, but we'll, we'll come back in more detail with that. I don't have that built in the budget right now, we're going to analyze that more. Sewer Fund, again, this is operating income. You can see in twenty-twenty-three, it looks like a big operating loss. That's because we put eight-hundred thousand in there for the demolition of the old sewer plant, which we just received bids on. I know Brian's department is analyzing those. Those would be expensed in one year because you're not building something, you're, you're tearing something down. That's why that shows an anomaly. And then coming back up, we, we do have less collection than our leachate and septicage that people bring in, but it's been a dry year, so some of these other landfills, not as much flowing through there. But looking at a five percent I put in, again, all of these utility funds will also relate to all those street projects we do. When you reconstruct, you do all that infrastructure underneath and it's very expensive. So we need to do a deep diving, get all these puzzle pieces put together.
Bill?
Yep.
Didn't we have money put away for disposal of that plant?
We do, but from an accounting treatment, it gets expensed and that's why it shows in the expenses. But the money is in the bank for it. Now, we put eight-hundred thousand in there, the, the current estimate of that project is much more. We're kind of a broken record with that, but that's why we'll look at those bids, look at, I know Brian broke that down in two phases just because of that, because we had eight-hundred thousand planned in there and how does the plan look? So we'll evaluate, when can we do both phases, now or we stage them, so. Water Fund, kind of the same scenario, five percent I put in for residential and commercial rates here as well. Good operating income in here. We've been trying to build that up over the years as well. Our sewer fund has a larger cash balance than our water fund. And that's why we've been taking a little more aggressive approaches over the last ten years, kind of phasing that in. And Stormwater Fund, looking at going up a dollar here, maybe two dollars then for commercial and large commercial, four dollars. At one, two and four, so on the increased side of that. But maintaining operating income, again, this one probably has the lower cash balance compared to the other utility funds. But stormwater improvements are getting more and more expensive as well. And we have that new employee added here of a forty percent allocation with the building department. And then our internal service fund, the equipment fund, that ten percent we already talked about to help offset our inflationary cost of all our equipment. Okay, last slide. We'll come in on Monday, hope you approve this so we can get this to Ottertail County. Again, we want to point out levy can decrease after September, cannot go above this. It's the tax levies goal to bring that down. We're going to continue to work, actually, we're going to pick up our meetings back again at the end of September on a Wednesday then. And then, so we'll work on that between September and December, come back for that public meeting in December, six P M. or later, and then get that action from the council to approve the final budget, get it off to the county by the end of the month. I think that is it.
Thanks, Bill. Couple just quick points, as you mentioned, thanks to the tax levy committee, Councilmembers Jove and Rachel's, they went above and beyond, been involved with this tax levy for the last seven years. And yeah, the, the commitment is really appreciated. This has not been an easy budget to go through, so Bill, Sandy, thank you too. And I guess last, but not least, Andrew, thanks too, yeah. Maybe it is, Lisa, yeah. But anyway, as you mentioned, so we, we have, we're committed to bringing this down, bringing your recommendations to the committee over the next couple of months. We'll bring it back in December for the final approval. But yeah, it hasn't been an easy process, but it's been one that's been, I think, productive. And we've really took, taken a deep dive into the, the budget. So thanks again to the tax levy committee, so with that.
One other side note with that, Andrew did kind of poll some of our other outstate cities and we're actually coming in less than some of our peers, so.
That's exactly what I was going to say, so we're on the same page.
Yeah.
I, I did talk to, to other cities that are comparable in size and, and in rural centered significance. And we are probably the lowest. They, they are seeing the same things as it relates to wages and inflation being the main driver. And some of them were as high as about fourteen percent is where they think they're going to land with their budget next year. So I really repeat what everybody has said, the, the tax levy committee's done a good job of diving in. I really appreciate the time and commitment to that. This has been the most challenging budget cycle that I've been a part of to date. This is number eight for me already. And, you know, I'm just really impressed by the work that's been done, given the circumstances. And we're not ready to give up yet. We're going to keep working on this and try to drive that down as far as we can, so.
Yeah, thanks. So with that, is there a recommendation to bring this to the council on Monday night? Thanks, Laura, thanks Jim for a second.
Laura's first, of course.
Laura's first, alright. All favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign that motion carries. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
And with that, unless there's any other announcements, Lynn, we're adjourned. Have a good day, everyone.
You too.